This conference will now be recorded.
I don't see Commissioner Toyoka. I know he was traveling. I think he was going to try to join us. Commissioner Toyoka?
I saw him at one point briefly in the car.
I saw him. I agree. I saw him just briefly there and then he was able to drop off. He did text me and said he was having some trouble. So we'll see if he's able to join us later. We'll go ahead and call this regular session of the Board of Commissioners to order. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can you roll call?
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Commissioner Toyoka? Appears to be absent. And Chair Quilla?
Here. Thank you, Teresa. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Commissioner Thompson moves to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Webb seconds.
Moving second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify with an "I." "I."
"I."
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Do we have a...
Chair Quilla, members of the board, just real quickly, staff is asking your board to support the resolution and order proclaiming April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you, Don. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Chair, Commissioner Thompson would move to support the resolution and order proclaiming April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving second to approve the resolution proclaiming Sexual Assault Awareness Month. All those in favor signify with an "I."
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Board of Commissioners for Clatsop County in the matter of proclaiming April 2021 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual assault affects Oregonians every day, whether as a victim or survivor, or as a family member, friend, partner, neighbor, employer, or coworker of a survivor. And whereas Oregonians of all gender identify experiences, excuse me, Oregonians of all gender identities experience sexual violence, including an estimated one in four adult women who have been the victim of rape, and nearly one in five men who have experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas certain populations in Oregon experience much higher rates of sexual violence due to systemic oppression and inequity. And whereas compassionate, courageous, and dedicated individuals, local organizations, and other partners have provided services and support for victims and survivors, and worked to prevent sexual violence for decades. And whereas sexual violence is preventable, and all communities are strengthened by encouraging healthy, nonviolent interactions, relationships, and social norms. And whereas every individual and community in Oregon has a role to play to help eliminate sexual violence by working together to promote social change. Now therefore, we Clatsop County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Sexual Assault Action Awareness Month in Clatsop County dated this 28th day of April 2021. Next item is business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except for public hearings, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Yes, there are.
If you register...
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and just read the rules. If you register to speak, please wait till your name is called, then give your name and address for the record, and then you'll get two minutes to speak. Okay, Teresa?
First person Theodore Lundby.
Theodore, you're on mute. Theodore? We can't hear you. I... We can't hear you. You're on mute, Theodore.
We still aren't able to hear you.
Just not able to hear you. I'm sorry. We will have to try again here later. Teresa, who is the next person on the agenda to speak?
Jennifer Rasmussen.
Jennifer?
Hi there. I'm Jennifer Rasmussen, 92076 Pleasant Market Road in Astoria. And I just wanted to say a few things about the comprehensive plan update that you guys recently decided to pause the process of updating it. Um, I serve on the Northeast Countywide Advisory Committee and have been working on it for a year, whatever, however long it's been. And it's been just like a really interesting and worthwhile process. And I've enjoyed volunteering on that board or the commission. And the old plan is like 40 years old and super out of date, and I do feel like revising it. It needs to be revised to be relevant and useful. And don't understand why the process was paused. I think that the process has been going really well. There's been a lot of community involvement. Lots of individuals and other groups and nonprofits have been consulted, and experts brought in for extra education on all the different topics of all the different goals. The staff and the volunteers have put in just a lot of hours of work on this project. And it feels like it would be better to finish it now while we're all involved, rather than waiting and having to recruit new volunteers. It took like four months, maybe even six, to get started just through the process of recruiting. That feels like a lot of time to waste if you're trying to restart the process later on. I also wanted to point out that one of the main goals of the comprehensive plan is public involvement. It's one of the main focuses, and we weren't involved in this discussion of pausing the update at all. And that's counterintuitive. And it also just makes it feel like volunteers are going to be less likely to get involved again when you do try to restart it. If all of the work that we've done is just going to be going to waste and our time not worth anything. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We do appreciate your involvement.
Yes. Nancy Chase?
Hi, thank you. Nancy Chase, 3026 Northeast, 22nd Avenue, Portland, 97212. And I am also an owner of a short-term rental in Clatsop County and property up at Fort Stevens. So I'm very engaged with the county. I wanted to thank you for putting the short-term rental ordinance rewrite on hold, on pause. And I think I was kind of alarmed at how quickly some decisions seemed to have been made, and whether the decisions fall my way or not. I, you know, it's nice to hear the logic and know that it was a thoughtful process. And so I really appreciate just maybe you relooking at the whole thing and make it a thoughtful change if you're going to do it. I called your Alicia Assessment and Taxation yesterday. And based on a comment Commissioner Banks made that, you know, Falcon Cove and Cove Beach aren't the only short-term rentals. And there are 184 in the county, unincorporated county, and 17 to 20 figure varies just in Falcon Cove. So obviously the tail's wagging the dog here. And I guess the other thought I have is, you know, if it's not fixed, you know, don't break it. I don't know. What is that term? Someone will come up with it. But if it's not broken, don't fix it. And I do think you've had it for two years. The ordinance and rewrites are probably some changes that need to be made now that you've used it. But the biggest one to me is just how to handle complaints, false complaints, as well as legitimate ones. And then let it test, see if that works. But I think you need another committee, like you need a hole in the head. So that's my own opinion. And I just appreciate any way you're taking the time to look at this whole thing. Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Teresa?
Pat Corcoran?
Excellent. Thank you. Chair Quilla? And Commissioners, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Okay. My name's Pat Corcoran, 472 Pleasant Avenue in Astoria, Oregon. I'm a member of the Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee. My previous job included conducting public engagement activities in the context of coastal hazards planning. So I have some background in this area. My message tonight quickly can be summed up in the phrase, "Get the CACs back to work." Has it been tedious and too long? Maybe. But this is the part of the process that's supposed to be difficult. This is the beginning part of the making of the sausage. And as the process works through, it will finally come to the Board of Commissioners to adopt the language as it's written at that point. So I'm a little more patient with the process. Couple bullet points. One, pauses equal lost momentum on a major project. And this project doesn't need to lose momentum. Land use planning is very complex. Steep learning curve for the non-technical stakeholders. And I think Commissioner Thompson pointed out last meeting that the disconnect between scope of authority and chain of command, I think that's a fundamental thing we keep bumping up against. But again, we're working through these steep learning curves on the part of the public. It's also a big deal to update the comp plan. So this is a big deal. We're going through. That's why it's a multi-year process. And other counties are also looking at how we're doing. They're going to have to do these ultimately. So it's a collective effort here. I think the current CAC structure and the membership makes sense. But recruitment of volunteers is a perennial challenge, of course. But the state of Oregon, and specifically the Department of Land Conservation and Development, are partners on this project. And they may well have some guidance for the public involvement plan as we move forward. Because the current proposal to have staff work exclusively with the board over the next several months is, seems to be at odds with Goal One of the land use planning goals. And so I think we're going to have to be careful about process moving forward. And I look forward to the work of the CACs continuing. The work won't get any easier, or won't be any less controversial with an extended pause. And we have momentum that can be lost. So let's get the CACs back to work. Thank you for listening and good night.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
It is a big deal. Teresa, who's next?
Pamela Birmingham.
Pamela.
I'm not seeing, unless she's...
Pamela, have you joined us? Caller two?
I'm... Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Caller six, yes.
Thanks. I don't have good enough internet where I live to do anything but phone calls. So I'm Pam Birmingham, 41810, Misty Mountain Lane, Seaside. I'm the chair of the Elsie Jewell Citizen Advisory Committee, working on the comp plan. And I thank the Commissioners and staff for recognizing the importance of our comprehensive plan. As a longtime local real estate broker, I refer to parts of the plan almost daily. When I was first interested in applying for the Citizens Advisory Committee, I realized this would be a very time-consuming project for both committee members and staff. But it is important work, and it is worthy of our time. And I think we've done a good job so far. Any plan is only as robust and enduring as the citizen involvement and time taken to craft it properly. It's... Oh, it's been frustrating sometimes, but now two years in, to be told to pause is very disheartening. I urge you to respect the work we've done, which I think you do, but to let us continue the process as it has been. As the previous speaker said, the momentum will be lost, and the process won't get any easier or any less controversial. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pamela. Teresa?
Yes. Cheryl Johnson?
Cheryl Johnson, 44183 Peterson Lane, Astoria. I am currently a member of the Northeast CAC. And we have been meeting and working diligently since November of 2019. I also serve as a liaison from the Northeast CAC to the Countywide CAC, which means that I have the privilege of attending twice as many meetings. But I do take the meetings seriously, and I usually prep for them for about two days. I am also in the very unique position of having served on the Northeast CAC back in 1979, when the county drafted the original comprehensive plan. I found that process to be challenging, but also satisfying, as we discussed and argued, and finally found common ground for the future of our community. I was quite frankly recently shocked and dismayed to read an email stating, quote, "There is no established date to resume committee meetings," and that, quote, "Staff will continue to prepare the drafts of the 18 land use goals." Goal number one of the 19 statewide planning goals for Oregon's historic Senate Bill 100 is citizen input. I believe that our CACs are an important part of this citizen input. Gail Hendrickson recently presented the board with six specific revisions to process. These revisions include monthly updates to the board, and conducting joint work sessions between the Countywide CAC and the Planning Commission. I sincerely believe that with these improvements suggested by your planning staff, and continued representation from the CACs, we can successfully complete an updated comp plan that reflects the diverse needs of our county going into the future. I respectfully request that the board consider and adopt the revisions, and schedule the next meeting for the Countywide and the Area CACs. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. If Pamela, I think, I was just going to say, I think Pamela's phone is still, or it's still open there. It needs to be muted there.
Okay. All right. Kathy May?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Kathy May, 79138 Ty Road, Arch Cape. First, I'd like to thank you for putting, pausing the segment of the coordinates relating to STRs. I think there's way too much complication in... in the specific communities, and the influence that is being bestowed upon the community by the two different divisive sides. And I think that the Commissioners have done a very nice job of sitting back and taking both sides into consideration. And unlike the other segments, I think that this needs to be taken slower, and more things need to be taken into consideration. I sent a letter into the Commissioners describing our personal experience, and that's only the tip of the iceberg, and of the abuse that goes on as far as violations and personal attacks on the STR homeowners. It's really tearing our community apart. And that in itself, for the STR segment, I think needs to be put on pause because there is influence being pushed that's pretty blatant and pretty obvious to most of everyone. But the rest of the, what I'm hearing from everyone else, if it can be segmented, I think that the STR is the only piece that really does need to be put on hold. I want to thank all of you for working really hard. And I know this is very complicated and frustrating at points, dealing with the community with everyone's different perspectives. And so I just want to thank you for putting the efforts in and letting us speak.
Thank you, Kathy.
Jan Mitchell?
Jan Mitchell, I live at 362 Duane Street in Astoria. And I serve on the Countywide Committee on the update of your comprehensive plan, which is long overdue at 40 years. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you directly. I have served for two years studying and attending meetings. We have all volunteered considerable time to this complex task, covering many varied topics. After listening to your work session discussion and receiving an email from staff, we aren't sure if we are fired, paused for two months, or paused forever. I'm retired now. Here was long-range planning. And I started out with the responsibility for citizen participation after grad school because the men didn't want to do it. I ended up directing long-range planning for a city of 400,000. And I understand the complexities of the job and the larger politics of the county. I also understand that Oregon's first goal has to do with the importance of citizen participation. I have never left or ended an incomplete citizen's effort, nor have I seen it done at the city or county level where I worked for 25 years before moving to Astoria. I can't say it's unprecedented, but firing a group where there is no malfeasance or dereliction of duty is strange, and will certainly draw attention to you from the public and county and state officials, and not the good kind. Three of you have never observed our meetings. We're not sure how or why you came to this, and it has not been discussed in public. I'm asking you to meet with us, to tell us what is wanted, and to work this awkward pause through. Any new group you choose will have to revisit what we have already covered, so you will not be saving time or staff resources. We're happy to work with the Planning Commission members to integrate learning and move forward. I've sent a longer letter with more detail, which I hope you'll take the time to read. We are waiting to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Teresa?
Jim Allegria?
Hi, Jim.
Hello. My name is Jim Allegria. I live at 1264 Grand Avenue in Astoria. And I'd like to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to address the board. I'm a member of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. The Community Development Director has reached out on more than one occasion to encourage people from a diverse geographic area and background to apply. I support the increase in number of people from five to nine in each of the areas, and hope that the Commissioners would aid in recruiting people. Because that's always been an issue ever since the start, is not only finding people, but also once they agree to actually attend the meetings. The Advisory Committee has been very diligent in addressing the broad range of topics included in state goals. The meetings have been open to all members of the public, and they have had significant input to the process. Regular public attendees should be asked to apply as advisory members since they have shown a keen interest in the process. Work on the Advisory Committee has been very rewarding, but it does require a significant amount of pre-work that you've been hearing from a couple of the other speakers. You may want to consider amending the bylaws that to state that advisory members have only a certain number of unexcused absences, and after which they should be dropped from the committee to allow other members of the public that may have more time to participate. But I must say that I was surprised, hurt, and confused when I received an email thanking me for my service, and that the committee's work may be placed on indefinite hold. A review of committee's progress midway through a long project is always a good idea. But pausing the plan update to increase efficiency seems counterproductive. I urge the Commission to allow the work of the Advisory Committee to continue as the Commission conducts their review. I'll be submitting some additional comments in written form at a later date. Thank you very much for spending the time.
Thank you, Jim.
Andy Davis?
Andy?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm Andy Davis. I live at 376 Third Street in Astoria. Good evening, Commissioners. Since June 2019, it's been my pleasure to serve as the Chair of your Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee for the Comp Plan Update. I've come here tonight, like many others, to register some thoughts with you about the process. I watched your work session on April 20th, and I hear your concerns. I'm very conscious of the time burden that this process has put on both staff and the citizen members of the CACs, to the extent that I've even reached out to the county manager about it. And I would agree that we can and should improve our workflow. Briefly, it's, as others have mentioned, it's been a steep learning curve for us as a group. Many of us have not been through this process before, and we've had to grow into it. I do believe we've made progress in the last few months, and more recent meetings have been moving at a much healthier pace compared to our early work. While I'm hesitant to lose momentum, I think there is value in having a dialogue with Commissioners, the Planning Commission, and staff on the best way to move forward. So what I'd like to ask you to consider is to include some or all of the CAC members in the dialogue suggested at the work session so that we can share both our reflections on our current work, and to have conversations with you about some of the items that were brought up, like aspirational goals and scope of authority. I think reasonable people can have different ideas about how those concepts fit into the comprehensive plan. And having a dialogue about them outside of just short public comment periods may be helpful to everyone getting on the same page, or at least understanding each other and finding a way to move forward in a way that best contributes to making a successful comp plan. And in the long run, makes our county stronger, which is what I believe all of us want in this process. Thank you for your time and service.
Yeah, thank you very much, Andy. I see we have a caller on that needs to mute. Caller number seven could mute, please. Thank you. Teresa?
That's everybody. I'd like to see if Theodore Lundby is possibly one of these callers, maybe?
I see. I see. He just arrived back. Theodore? Theodore? Can you hear? Can you hear us? Theodore Lundby?
I guess that's everybody.
Okay. Theodore could...
Hello?
Hi! We can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I'm here. Yes. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great. My name's Theodore Lundby. I live at, I live in Astoria. Okay. I live in Astoria at 2553 Grand. I'm a volunteer on the Planning Committee, Southwest Coastal Planning Committee, and also on the Countywide Planning Committee. And I'm here to address the suspension of the comprehensive plan work. We have been for two years working on this project, as you know. And also, as you know, it involves a great deal of work, reading volumes of literature each month, and then attending meetings for the planning. When it started, there were many volunteers, and many have dropped out. They were just probably not aware of how much work would be involved. So what you have here now is a cadre of dedicated citizens who are willing to work and give up their time for the benefit of the county. It is, it's important that the county commission and the county recognize and honor that so that people such as these, as we, are willing to do voluntary work in the future. It's very discouraging when the county acts on the interests of private business the interests of private business and ignores the hard work of volunteer members of committees that they have formed. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Theodore. I'm glad we got to get you in there.
No, thank you very much.
Appreciate the comments from everybody. I think this will give us some opportunity to discuss as well. And Andy, I like the idea of possibly bringing in someone to, from the Assistant Advisory Committee to, to participate. If we don't have anything else for business from the public, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thompson would move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second?
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is Commissioner Liaison Reports. Can I have Commissioner Thompson start us off?
Thank you, sir. I want to refer to item 11 on our consent calendar that we just passed. It's the custodial contract, and on page 157 of our board packet, I want to quote, "In terms of the nature and scope of the project, the county takes pride in providing an exceptionally clean and safe environment at all times for its visitors and employees, and expects the custodial services firm to demonstrate this same pride in their work performance." I read that contract, I think it was 2016, when it came before the commission when I was here. I was singularly impressed by what I saw as the professional integrity of Dave Diefenbach and his staff as they prepared that contract, because if you're going to get down in the weeds and specify to the degree how clean the bathrooms have to be, and how much pride that each person should have in the work that they do, and the safety and comfort and well-being of our employees and our guests, I think this really exemplifies it. So I just wanted to say how impressed I was with reading that again. That's number one. Number two, I am extremely grateful to our devoted community volunteers. I appreciate the time and the effort, the thought, the passion that's gone into the participation in this review of the comprehensive plan. As we go forward, the governing body will take on the responsibility of truing up this process. We're working on this. Let me assure you, your work is honored, it is valued, it is not lost. I hear, I hear the comments about momentum. I appreciate that. On the other hand, there has to be a reset, I think, as a responsible representative of everybody all across my district, all across the county, a reset is essential right now for all aspects. Rest assured, we honor you, we respect you, we appreciate you. Your work will not be lost. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Um, my report is, is pretty brief. Had a meeting with CFEDC recently, and my takeaway today was a really exciting and interesting project that I kind of wanted to, to really highlight for folks, is the Klotzup Works internship that is being done through the school districts and through local businesses. And some of these local employers have applied to host interns this year, and hopefully several more will join, but Klotzup County, City of Seaside, Cannon Beach Police Department, Rick and Bah Construction, Pelican Brewing, Halesco Construction, Coastal Restoration, Hampton Lumber, Haystack Rock Awareness Program, OSU Extension, and Columbia Hospitality, just to name a few of those businesses that have applied to open their doors and host internships for high school students this summer. And they have recently extended the due date to May 15th for applications from local high schools. And so if you have a relationship, commissioners, or, or any, anybody else in, in the audience this evening, please reach out to them and let them know about this internship availability. What a wonderful career development opportunity that these kids have in Klotzup County, especially just an opportunity to, to try something before they dedicate, you know, potentially college or, or continuing education to, to the process. And so that's just one thing that I really wanted to say, wow, this is, this is good, and I wish I had had this opportunity when I was a high school student. And then in regards to all of the conversations this evening, I do also wish to reiterate that being a volunteer is a very valid and valuable thing to be. And, and this is in no way, the decisions is in no way a reflection of the worth of a volunteer. I, I really feel like, and I appreciate what Commissioner Thompson was saying, that this, this is, we appreciate you. Please don't think that your efforts have been futile at this point. It's just, all of us are gathering to analyze and possibly streamline and improve the current situation. And, and so just know that you're valued and that we, we look forward to hearing and, and speaking with you further. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. And I agree about the Klotzup Works program. It is a huge, successful, fantastic program that goes on every year. Commissioner Webb?
I don't think I have anything to add. I would, the comment that I would make is one that I made to, to our county manager, which I, I always believe, I always worry that, that we package too many things into the consent calendar. And so, and so I'm always worried that our citizens want to know when we talked about this and how this happened, and et cetera. I think tonight, the consent calendar is very noteworthy because it reflects a lot of the work that our staff has been doing. A, to get grants. You know, we just had our first budget meeting, and it sometimes breaks my heart to see how much, how entrepreneurial our staff has to be in going out by themselves to get grants. I, I wish that in one of these budget considerations, we would figure out how to, how to have a full, full-time grant writer, because our, you know, our, our folks just spend, I believe, more time than they should, having to fund their own programs, which doesn't seem quite right to me. It's the Clutie Creek, the, the two restrooms from the Parks Department. You know, I, I don't know the extent to which people understand that, that, that these are things that our staff has been tracking for years. I mean, folks, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I tell you, you could go back through the minutes, and these folks have been trying to get funding for restrooms for four years. Yay, they did it. Steve did it. It, it's just, I, I think this package, these 10 items are, are just a wonderful tribute to our staff at, at how entrepreneurial they are, and how they stick with things for a really long time and make sure they happen. So it's just a shout out to our staff, to our staff folks. That's it for now.
That's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think your, your point is well taken. Well, I just wanted to say, I, I think your point's well taken about the consent calendar. Your chair went right to a vote on it rather than giving every, anybody an opportunity to make some comments. I think in the future, I'll allow, when we have something like 10 or 11 consent items, allow for some opportunity for discussion, and we'll do that next time, because I agree with you. I think this, this does demonstrate a lot of accomplishment, and we should celebrate it and, and talk about some of these items in a little more detail. So, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I had a few things I wanted to just cover tonight. In the, the Astorian, there is coverage of the letter that we sent to the governor with regards to, to the risk restrictions. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate, everybody knows this. I mean, we, we support, I support County Health Department 100%. They have just been a, doing a tremendous job over the last year. And, and I personally, I've been involved with the Vaccine Task Force. I work at a hospital. I share all the concerns about rising cases, and we had, you know, 14 more cases announced today. You know, hospitalizations are a true concern when you can't transfer a patient to another hospital because ICU beds are full in Portland, you know, and that's, that's huge. And, and I recognize that we have a way to go, ways to go to get 70% of this county vaccinated. We're getting there, but it, but not, not fast enough for a lot of, lot of our... Anyway, I, I would love to have a, you know, us focused just on preventing the spread of the virus and getting everyone vaccinated. Unfortunately, a little more complex than that, I feel. You know, at this point in the pandemic, you know, we need to continue preaching the message of social distancing, masking, using good judgment, but we can't put the entire blame and burden, say, on the restaurant industry, for example. I, I don't believe that's fair. It's time to give our businesses a break and a chance to look forward. I do appreciate the governor's working to approve a $20 million business, you know, small business emergency relief package. I think most businesses are really looking more for the ability to, to operate. Yes, that will help. I doubt it will mitigate for the losses over the next few weeks for businesses. But one businesses, one reason businesses need to stay open is it's difficult to find and retain employees right now. I've, I've heard that from countless businesses in the county, that finding employees right now is challenging, and you can't afford to furlough staff for a few weeks because you most likely won't get them back. So we really need to start the recovery mode now, not go backwards, keep the vaccinations going, keep the messaging around prevention going, while keeping our businesses safely open. And, and even at, even if it's at a limited capacity, just don't shut things down. So I think that was the purpose of the letter, and, and I hope that, you know, that will resonate with the governor. I know that other counties are joining us, and certainly this is the message of the AOC and Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association as well. As far as the comprehensive plan update, I really appreciate all of the comments and discussion this evening. You know, we all agreed at our work session to take a, take a breath, evaluate where we are, where we've been, where we're headed. Comp plan is a big deal. I heard that mentioned, and I agree with it. You know, our Community Development Director, Gail Hendrickson, her team have been working tirelessly on this since 2019. You know, we have new commissioners on both the county commission. We'll have new commissioners on the Planning Commission. This provides, I think, a good opportunity to sit down with the staff, meet with the Planning Commission, and plot a path forward. And we just completed our strategic plan earlier this year, and the comprehensive plan is really the long-term land use vision for the county. And I know we want a product that aligns with the work we did last year and one we can have, be happy with in the end. So I really appreciate all the work of the Citizen Advisory Committee's input and their comments tonight. And I ask for some patience just as we discuss, you know, the work and what that's been done, and, and consider our potential, you know, improvements maybe to the, to the process. There was a letter that was circulated to OFW earlier this week. Commissioner Webb made a comment that we should have a work session about it. I agree. I think we need to have a little more context to that letter. So we'll invite Steve Fick and Jim Wells from Salmon For All to be at the work session next Tuesday and give us some, some background and clarify, clarify their request. And lastly, thank you to Andy Davis and Norman Brown, who serves as our Chair and Vice Chair of the Budget Committee, respectively. I think we're off to a great start with the budget message. I know Monica must be tired after that. She did a great job, but I really look forward to working with this group over the next few weeks. And that's all I have. We'll turn it over to Don, County Manager.
Chair Quirrell, members of the board. I'll be brief. I just wanted to remind folks that we have an election coming up on May 18th, and so the voters' pamphlet should have been distributed by now, and then the ballots will be going out tomorrow. And so the ballot drop boxes are all open, and they're all distributed throughout the county. This election, as a little background, is mostly special district related, and so a lot of special district candidates from fire agencies, as well as Parks and Rec and other special districts. So, May 18th, staff will be working again and executing another quality election is our goal always, so we can maintain confidence in our election system, which, as we all know, is the foundation to our democracy. So staff is working hard to make sure that we do the best that we can. So, and that's all that I have. Chair Quirrell?
Thank you, County Manager. We'll move on to the business agenda this evening. We have one item on the business agenda, and that's the Human Services Advisory Council Membership Recommendations. That's on page 198 of our agenda.
Thank you, Chair. So the Human Services Advisory Council has some vacancies on their committee, and staff brought before the board at a work session the applicants that we had received for your review. These vacancies, there were four terms that expired on February 28th of 2021, and those memberships were for Randy Anderson, Tess Chedzie, Linda Dugan-Win Stanley, and Robert Mution. Those, there's a total of six vacancies that are open at this time, including those four. The council advertised the vacancies and invited applicants through the county website. A total of seven, a total of seven applications were compiled and given to the non-expired committee members for their review, and that consisted of Linda Crandall and Marion Derleth for their review. The advisory council, by unanimous vote, voted on April 1st to recommend to the board to reappoint all four rejoining members, being Randy Anderson, Tess Chedzie, Linda Dugan-Win Stanley, and Robert Mution. And the council also recommends one additional new member of Julia Weinberg. The seventh applicant, as previously mentioned in the work session, was not eligible, and, and the other one withdrew their application. So, any questions?
Any question for Monica? Okay. If none, we can entertain a motion.
Oh, I, I just had a quick question. Why, sorry, for Julia Weinberg, why is it listed as not applicable for Commissioner District? I was just curious.
I am assuming that she didn't fill that out on her application as to which district she lived in. I apologize. I'm trying to look at her application right now. She is on Avenue I in Seaside, which I believe that would be up to Commissioner Toyoka's district. Yeah.
Completely minor, but I was just looking at it going, man, I sure wish they live in Klotzup County.
They do live in Klotzup County.
So, Mr. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I moved that the board approve reappointing Randy Anderson, Tess Chedzie, Linda Dugan-Win Stanley, and Robert Mution for a three-year term, and also appoint Julia Weinberg for a two-year unexpired term for a total of eight members for the Human Services Advisory Committee.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve reappointing Randy Anderson, Tess Chedzie, Linda Dugan-Win Stanley, and Robert Mution for three-year terms, and appointing Julia Weinberg for a two-year unexpired term for a total of eight members for the Human Services Advisory Council. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. That is the only item on our business agenda. Anybody have anything for the good of the order this evening? Well, thank you very much. Thank you for everybody, thank you, everybody that joined. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for everybody, thank you, everybody that joined us this evening. Have a good rest of your evening. Take care.